All right, everybody, welcome. This is the first town hall for the healthcare professionals team of service to school. I'm the director of the healthcare professionals team, Peter Campbell. I've noticed we have a lot of familiar faces here, so welcome. Thanks for taking the time out of your busy days to join us today. And really, the goal of today is to be informal, but be really informative to all of you that are pursuing an MDD or PA program. So if you have any questions at all, please feel free to ask them because we have a panel with us of current PAs or people in the pipeline be PAs and MDs and DOs. So please ask questions. The whole point of this is to answer your questions and help you along with the process as you pursue an MDD or PA. So as I said, I'm Peter Campbell, you can call me Pete. A little bit of background about myself before I turn it over to everyone else is I went to West Point, graduated in 2010, was infantry officer, and then did that for five years or so. Then I joined Special Forces and did that for another five years and decided that I wanted to make a change and pursue medicine. So I'll be attending Mount Sinai in New York City in June of next year. All right, without further ado, I'm going to pass it off to Ryan Hopkins. Ryan, take it away.
Hi, guys. My name is Ryan. I was classmates with Peter at West Point, graduated in 2010. I was an engineer, then went to flight school and flew Chinooks for a couple of years and then got out. Deployed a couple of times, got out, and I'm at KU Medical Center. I just got off shift for internal medicine. I'm in my fourth year and looking to go anesthesia right now.
All right, Mike Spears.
Hey, I'm Michael Spears. I also graduated from West Point in 2010. I was an economics major, then aviation officer. I flew Blackhawks, then was stationed at Fort Bragg. And that took night class as well there for prereqs for medical school. Deployed a couple of times, now I'm at Indiana University and also going into anesthesia.
Thanks, Mike. I don't think we have Julia here. Katrina, are you there?
I'm here. Sorry for my tardiness. Lots of West Point people. I went to the Naval Academy and graduated in 2011. Still on active duty, I'm a pilot, C2 pilot by trade. I applied for the IP program with Mount Sinai. So same as Pete, we actually went to high school together, fun fact. I applied in 2019, deferred my acceptance, and I'll be starting there in 2022. So very excited.
Awesome, thanks, Katrina. I don't think we have Brandon with us. Brandon, are you there? If not, Will, you want to go ahead?
Hi, my name is William Eisenhardt. I did not go to a military academy, but I did work at one for a little bit, beating up on midshipmen in 2003. So undergrad Salisbury University, go Seagulls, graduate program at Louisiana Tech. Graduated in 1998, so I'm old. All of a sudden, 9/11 happens, I decided to join the military as an enlisted guy with a master's degree. Had no idea what I wanted to do when I grew up, so I ended up being a Navy EOD tech. Decided to leave that, was an intel analyst, and then from there, I was like, I kind of missed the game. So my friend talked me into going SF. Don't try to do that when you're 43 years old. I was in the SFAS and then SFQC as a 43 to 46-year-old, and my body feels every single day of that. I did not graduate as a long tab, so I graduated as a whiskey one with an army, as a special operations medic assigned to an Army Special Forces unit. Decided I missed the Navy because I really didn't feel like driving 300 miles to drill during a COVID pandemic. So I went back to the Navy. Go Navy, beat Army. And right now, I got off a shift at 7:00 AM from my Peds rotation, and then I went to drill, and now I'm here. I am currently in my second year in the Yale PA online program. It's, I'm in their second class ever. They're now in a third class. And so any questions about PA programs, especially the Yale one, I'm here to help out.
Thanks, Will, I appreciate it. Chris, you're up.
I'm Chris Bellair. I'm from Atlanta. Went to undergrad at Princeton, commissioned as an officer in the Marine Corps. Did four years, then spent one year in a postback program at Columbia, and now I'm a second-year med student at Mount Sinai, also in New York.
All right, thanks, Chris. All right, so that wraps it up for our intros. At this point, just want to open it up to any questions you have based on the intros that you heard. For anyone who's interested in PA school or med school, please fire away. And if there aren't any questions, I'll, you know, ask a few, but I'll open up to you guys at this point. So not the panelists, but anyone attending right now, feel free to ask a question.
I have one for William. So my name's Luke. I'm currently active duty in the Navy. I actually get out in about 30 days. Christopher, he's my services school ambassador, awesome guy. William, for you, what made you go PA over, like, obviously, you were an SF medic. I'm currently a corpsman, so I'm kind of medic, though we hate that term. So for that, what made you go PA over MD, over NP? And then what programs were you looking at other than Yale's?
So yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm not a special forces medic. I'm a special operations medic, and I got the ability to hang out at an ODA level a lot of times. So I want to make sure that everyone knows I've never rocked a long tab. I've rocked long hair, though. But, uh, so the reason why I went PA over NP, first and foremost, going through the pipeline and hanging out with the special forces battalions and in general, the courses, I got to see a ton of PAs, didn't see a ton of MPs. Not to mention, a lot of these guys are really phenomenal with procedures, knew their medicine inside and out. And I had that long talk with them, like, hey, should I go PA? Should I go MD? And they were like, you're old. And they're like, you want to start practicing medicine in your mid-50s? And how would your family feel about that? I'm like, yeah, gotcha. And honestly, from my point of view, I like the fact that in about five more months, I'm graduating and I'll be practicing. And if I don't like whatever specialty I'm in, I'll change. As opposed to having to spend another year and a half in medical school and then hoping to get into residency program and telling my family, hey, if we didn't get into residency program here in the DC metro area, I'm moving. And I don't think they'd like that because they're staying put. In terms of the PA programs I applied to, initially, I applied to Calson, Anna Rondell, Shannon Doha, and GW because I was not leaving the area. One of my friends, who's a Tillman scholar, who's now in his first year at Brigham and Limens, said, hey, check out this program. It's Yale. It sounds pretty cool because it's Yale. And I'm like, sure, I'll look at it. I applied, 24 hours later, they're giving me a call, and they're like, hey, you sound like a perfect candidate for us. And they were really leaning forward on talking to me the entire time in the process. And I really liked how they were really engaging and they were really forward-leaning. I like the fact that it is not 100% online, but it's also not 100% in a classroom setting. And I don't need to be sitting in a classroom to do this. I could be saying in my hometown with my family. And what really makes this program amazing is that I got to create my own rotations. So because I want to go back into military as a PA, I've done seven rotations so far inside of a military hospital with IPAB students, and I don't have to wear a uniform. I don't have to salute anybody. I can wear scrubs, and I can grow long hair and a beard if I wanted to. And then I can go to the civilian sector and do whatever rotations I want there. I'm not beholden to a specific medical program. So I actually did my emergency medicine rotation at Barnes Jewish at a Level 1. I'm supposed to go to Hopkins in January for surgery. That's up in the air, though, because of what's going on. I'm doing a Peds ED rotation at Children's National. Now, I'm not one of the students there that they normally deal with, so I'm on the weekend nights. So that's my, that's a cross out to bear, but I'm down with it. I'm in a Level 1 trauma center, doing stuff that other people aren't in other programs, so I'm down for that. I hope that answers some of your questions, Luke.
Absolutely. And just one follow-on question, if I may. So you being in online PA school, do you have any concerns with the fact that all your stuff is online and most of your learning hands-on is limited to your, just, I guess, your, what is it, rotations? Any concerns with that at all?
Yeah, so honestly, in my first year, you go up there twice for your hands-on. Now, COVID-dependent, everyone is not doing that right now. But in those two weeks, I, we were at, we were on campus, we were hanging out. The anatomist that deals with the entire Yale School of Medicine was there for us specifically, as well as one of their neurosurgeons. And this, both those guys are renowned. And so that was pretty awesome, and we got to do a whole bunch of hands-on. If I'm a brand-newbian and I really don't know what I'm doing, I'd be really concerned. But for people that are former military, that are special operations medics, that are corpsmen, that are 68 whiskies, that are Air Force medics, this is a program that's pretty phenomenal. And I've been working with the Veterans Caucus for the APA, pounding the pavement, saying, this is the program for special operations medic, for corpsmen, for medics, and the DoD needs to recognize that because this thing brings a lot to the table for these guys.
Hey, Luke, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
I've known Will since 2014, and I've known Will throughout his medical career. And I've, I've watched Will's medical ability and knowledge exponentially increase as an online student at Yale from when we went to sock him together. And that was a concern that he even brought to me, was like, I don't know, you know, it's going to be online, it's not going to be at Yale. I've consulted Will three or four times for personal matters, for emergencies that popped up with my own family members. I don't think he's lacked anywhere from not having in-person didactics. So I second what Will puts out.
Yeah, everyone is online right now. Like, all MD programs are online for the preclinical training. And I think that's something that Will was getting at, and we can talk more about, is that any medical profession is going to have two different types of training. They're going to have the preclinical, more academic training where you're, you know, watching lectures online or in the library, reading a book. And then you have these rotations, which is more clinical, hands-on training. And so both PA, MD, all of these different programs are going to have different sides of the coin. You're going to have the preclinical training normally upfront, and then you'll have more rotations on the backend. And that's really so you can be, you know, book smart and street smart.
If I can just add something in there, I mean, don't want to beat a dead horse, but caveating what the other panelists are saying, like, before COVID started, so I started med school in 2017, you know, obviously, pre-COVID. And it was funny, the first day of class, everybody like dressed up in their suit and tie, they were like ready to go, and there was like 200 people that sat down in the lecture hall. Within, I'd say, two to three weeks, that number dropped to about 20 or 30 people that would actually attend the lecture. At least in my class, so everybody, because they would, at least at our school, they would videotape it anyway. So we were essentially pre-COVID, doing, a majority, I'd say 70 to 80% of people in my school were doing everything online anyway because they recorded the lectures. Now, that may not be the case for all institutions, but even prior to that, it was pretty much, hey, what can you teach yourself? In like, you know, as long as, if you had a question, you're to reach out. So there, there wasn't really too much of a change. And then when COVID hit, the only difference was if you were on the clinic side of things, you were still coming in where you affected. Who knows what's going to happen with all the vaccines that are coming out in the next couple of years? But if that is a concern of yours, even before COVID, at least on the med school side, and I would imagine it's very similar on the PA side, like, you know, people were studying at their homes even prior to that.
Thanks, everyone, for answering those. We have Julia Shin, who just joined us as well. So she's on the panel, and she's a first year at Sinai. But Julia, feel free to just give a quick intro and background of yourself. Although maybe she's muted, I'm not sure. Working through this. I think I've muted Will as well somehow.
Oh, there we go. Hi, everyone. My name is Julia, and I'm a first year at Mount Sinai. I'm happy to be here. Sorry I'm late. I was running a little bit behind on things. Um, so a little bit about me, I served in the military, in the Army, as a MOFNI. I'm not sure if anyone of you in this chat is, but I'm happy to talk to you if you are. After the service, I went to Columbia postback, and I got into Mount Sinai through the linkage program. So if anyone is looking into the postback program and going into med school afterwards, I'm happy to talk to you as well.
Great, thanks, Julia. Appreciate it. Might I chime in really quick on a couple of things? Go ahead, I won't speak this time.
Okay, thanks. So a couple of things about the Yale PA online program that I really liked. When the program director talked about it, he said that when you go to a PA program, an NP program, it's different than a medical school program because medical school, the next place you're going to is residency. Residency is kind of like after residency, that's when you start looking for your job. But the reality is for PA and NP, you're going to move your entire family, go to a program. You're probably not going to be in classroom because nobody goes to class, as Ryan said earlier, which is very true. And then the next thing you know, at the end, when you graduate, you're looking around going, where am I going to work? This, this market's saturated. So he's like, you stay local, you start pounding the pavement where you're at, and you start doing rotations there. Next thing you know, they're going to start offering you jobs. So first and foremost, a lot of my classmates that are graduating with me in April, sans COVID kind of thing, they're already getting offered jobs in the locations they're at and where they're living. The second thing is in terms of us, in terms of me personally, I'm actually with a lot of IPAB students. So I actually get graded once by my university, and then I ask them to do a eval separately. That grades me like I'm an IPAB student. And so far, against other IPAB students, I've been told that I'm the best PA student that has been on their rotations in the last few years. So that shows you that even against a top 10 military program where they weed out people throughout the course, that I'm hanging pretty hard. And some of those rotations, my last rotation was the Pentagon, where I was actually running the acute care clinic by myself for two days.
Awesome, thanks for that, Will. Hey, Ricky, do you just want to give a background of yourself real quick?
Yeah, sure. Hey, everybody, my name is Ricky Ditzel. I'm rocking the same pole as Will. So right now, in my free time, I'm the Director of Research and Education at the Special Operations Medic Coalition. We're a 501(c)(3) that's unapologetically supportive of the special operations medic, helping them go from battlefield provider to veteran professional. With that, I flew on the helicopters that the awesome pilots in here flew. I was a 160th flight medic for the last four years before getting out of the military. I also got out during COVID in April, so if you have any anxiety about getting out during this pandemic, please contact me. I can talk you through it. It's still worth it, go for it. The other thing is I just got accepted recently into the Columbia postback program. I have a undergrad in emergency management from GW, which I never thought I'd use, and then a pandemic happened, so that's been kind of funny. But, so just, just so you guys know, if you, obviously, I'm not a panelist here. I'm not a med student yet, I'm not a PA student. But as far as network, I'm definitely here to help you guys if you need anything. And I can use SOMC's network, even if you're not a special operations medic, because it's mine and Will's department. So I'm also a services schools ambassador for this, this team. I'm a board member at large candidate for the Special Operations Medical Sciences or Special Operations Medic Association. So we're trying to increase outreach there. I run SOMC, and then I'm on a couple teams that vary from combat surgical critical care to the Uniformed Services Universities Neuroscience Team and the En Route Combat Casualty Care Team. So if you need any type of networking, or my goal is to help increase your, increase your odds of getting accepted into these advanced programs by getting you involved in the research, putting out education opportunities, and advocating for you to any type of education department. So whatever you guys need, I'm definitely here to help.
Awesome, thanks so much, Ricky, I appreciate it. We had one question I'll just address about, like, outside of this, but about nursing school and anything else outside of PA and MDDO programs. We do want to get into that, into that area to help veterans get into nursing school, veterinary school, dental school, and stuff like that.
You too.
Oh, Vincent, I think you're, you need to go ahead. But we don't have any ambassadors right now that are currently nurses or veterinarians or dentists. So it's something we're trying to pursue. If you know someone who is in that field and is interested in helping out and joining as an ambassador with services school, please let us know and point them our way because we'd love to have them and have them advise. So just throwing it out there for anyone who's interested in one of those pathways. Also, we have Jim Selby here, he's the CEO of Services School, and Casey Valenti, she's Director of Communications. So if you had any questions related to stuff that they might be able to address, please, you know, ask away.
And Alan also wanted to introduce himself, too.
Oh, yeah, Alan, please.
Hey, how you guys doing? Sorry, I'm driving, so I can't look at the camera, but nice to meet everyone. My name's Alan Chang. I'm from California, went to UCLA for undergrad, went through the Health Profession Scholarship Program, went to Einstein in New York for medical school, and then afterwards did a naval, I went to Naval Medical Center Portsmouth for a transitional internship, picked up a flight contract, became a flight surgeon, did two tours with the Marines in Okinawa and then in San Diego. And then I got out in 2016, completed my residency in emergency medicine at Stanford University. And currently, I am an EMS disaster medicine fellow at Harvard UCLA Medical Center down in LA. So I'm, I love the prehospital environment and the prehospital care world. I also serve as a SWAT physician for Samhita County Tactical EMS Services. So that's a little bit of my background, and it's nice to meet everyone.
Great, thanks so much, Alan, I appreciate it. And if anyone has any questions related to that, please ask away for Alan.
Alan, I actually have a question. My name's Arturo. I'm a first-year biology and global health student at the University of Chicago. Ricky, you may know somebody from my cohort, Eric, he was a soft medic. He's going a different route now, though. Yeah, just missed him. But I am looking at becoming a medical professional. And I actually started off in the Army as a military intelligence analyst. So I'm making a big shift over into the medical field. And I was wondering how I can acclimate myself to that environment, whether it be through research opportunities. Right now, I'm looking at some clinical opportunities at the UChicago Med Hospital. But I was also considering getting an EMT license and spending the summer doing that. I'm, I'm looking at a way to familiarize myself with the environment and grow accustomed to it. If anybody has any suggestions for that, be appreciated.
Yeah, so just, just, some of it was coming through a little bit clearly, but just to clarify, you're, what, you're currently a undergrad? Or you're in undergrad, an undergrad program?
Yes, I'm a first-year undergrad, so I'm new to the undergrad game.
Yes, and your ultimate goal is to do like a physician track training kind of a thing or not?
Yeah, so I'm looking at medical school, thinking surgery, but, you know, it's very down the line, I still have to look at it.
Yes, so, you know, the pathway to physician is relatively straightforward. You know, I think probably, I worked, I spoke a little bit to Derek, who's also on the call. I'm his healthcare ambassador in person. But I think, you know, one of the most important things is just getting your grades locked down. I've definitely seen military vets and, you know, and even like non-military who have tried to optimize their, their application package by doing a lot of, you know, the quote-unquote extracurriculars, whether it's clinical stuff, research or whatnot. And unfortunately, it comes at the expense of their grades, where their, you know, their overall like GPAs, especially in your STEM classes, are not looking as strong as they should. So I would say that by far, making sure that your grades are dialed in, making sure all your prereqs are dialed in, those are going to be the two big checkboxes, followed by your standardized examinations. And then after that, pretty much everything else will fall into play. The fact that you're prior military is probably going to be the strongest extracurricular story, background thing that any of us on this call will have. And, you know, my experience with both with medical school as well as with residency is that the majority of programs that I've spoken to, they do see the military as a, as an overall positive and overall add value, even if it's not, even if it's, take it for a second. You know, even if you're not specifically a medical person in the military, you know, one of the big conversion things that we think about with, you know, getting out of the service is how do you translate your experiences from the military to the civilian world? And, you know, even if you weren't a corpsman or a medic or any of that, you know, the biggest thing that I think all of us as a community are really good at is our, is on one level, like a maturity professionalism experience, our military bearing, our capacity to deal with scenarios and be very, very adaptive. So I think even as an intelligence officer, there's a lot of things that we would all share. So I think that, you know, the, if all the other things are dialed in well, being, becoming an EMT, becoming a paramedic, doing clinical shadowing, doing research, those are all fantastic things, and they would be important in your overall package. But just make sure that those other things are, like, make sure the grades, your test scores are dialed in are going to be kind of your number one and number two priorities.
Thank you, Alan. So my takeaway is focus on GPA and start studying.
Hey, Arturo, I also want to add, I'm pretty closely, I'm pretty close with the admissions team at Mount Sinai, and I think like their perspective is probably similar to the perspective of a lot of medical school admissions offices, which is like, they're going to look at your package holistically, right? They're going to look at your grades, they're going to look at your MCAT, they're going to look at your extracurriculars, they're going to look at your military record. So all of it is, of course, important, but you've already kind of checked so many, so many boxes. And I think this is what Alan was getting at as well. You've already checked so many boxes from being in the military. You've demonstrated, you know, that maturity and professionalism that he mentioned. You've demonstrated a service-oriented, you know, mindset and career. You've demonstrated leadership, communication skills, decision-making, community service. Like, these are things that other kind of more traditional medical school applicants are, that's why they do all these other things, right? That's why they're involved in student groups, and that's why they're, you know, shadowing and things. Like, you should do that if it helps you. Those things are inherently for you, not really for an admissions office. Like, the admission, like, if shadowing is going to help you decide, do I want to go to med school? Do I want to go to PA school? Do I want to do surgery? Do I want to do medicine? Any of these different decision points, I think those are really more selfish things for you, which are great, you should do them. But you've already checked so many boxes. The box that you're doing now is to show that you're going to be academically prepared and ready for the rigors of med school. That is the one box that you haven't checked so far that is extremely relevant to, like, from the medical school admissions perspective. So I would really focus on that because you've already checked everything else off the box, pretty much. And I, just one minor thing is since you're a first year at a great program at UChicago, definitely encourage you to look at Mount Sinai because they have a pipeline program for college sophomores. You apply at the beginning of your sophomore year, it's called FlexMed, and they essentially provide early acceptance to medical school, waiving the MCAT, and really accepting you based off your, you know, background, your, you know, previous career, your, and one year of pre-medical sciences in your first year of college. And you can get early accepted to Mount Sinai, not have to worry about interviewing, not have to worry about the MCAT, and really get to enjoy the rest of your college experience. So I definitely encourage you to look at that. It's, it's pretty competitive, so don't be discouraged if you don't get accepted. But it is a great opportunity and something that you can do before you have to look at any other school, you can see if you can get in here. So I definitely encourage you to check out that program because, as you can tell, like, a number of these people are students at Mount Sinai. Mount Sinai's been extremely veteran-friendly medical school and one that really values military experience and all the, you know, all that comes with it. So I would agree 100%. All those other extracurriculars, you know, volunteering, all that stuff is absolutely wonderful, but if it's going to take away from your grades so that you're saying, oh, so that you're saying, oh, well, the reason I have a two sevens because I was working 40 hours a week in a hospital, that's not going to be important for you. Like, that's not going to be a justification for, you know, a GPA. So I would, that stuff comes first, like your classes come first. And if you have time, by all means, explore all those opportunities. But I, I think that you've already checked so many boxes and really the only thing remaining, the only question remaining is your academic preparedness. Because almost, I mean, I think every medical school in the country is going to want to accept you. You just need to now show them that you'll be successful once, once you're there and that if they accept you, you're not going, they're not setting you up for failure by doing so. So most schools are going to be exceptionally friendly of veteran applicants. They're going to want to have you there. They're going to want to have your experiences, you know, bring them into the classroom and sharing them with your classmates and doing the kind of like veterans health advocacy and all that kind of stuff. They're going to want to accept you, but you're going to have to give them the reason. And your reason is going to be, hey, I've been successful in the pre-medical curriculum. I've demonstrated, you know, a commitment to doing well in school and, you know, developing good study habits and good, you know, all that kind of stuff that is really going to be indicative of, of future success in med school.
Thank you so much.
I just have to say something. Hi, everyone. Deja Nicholas here. Army Medical Service Corps Officer, still active duty, still trying to find my way. I know you guys introduced yourselves and you talked about your respective career paths, West Pointers, soft medics. For those of you that are not traditional as far as like your undergraduate degrees, I didn't catch if anyone did a post-bac or can talk about, yeah, just, just if you're kind of non-traditional, how did you find your way? Did you do community college, post-bac? And how was it if you took a little bit more of a gap year between your studies? And if you did take the MCAT, you know, how did that work with studying and the prep habits and things of that nature?
I mean, I think in general, the more non-traditional applicant you are, the more you're, you're just really going to need to buckle down and knock out the, like, the post-bac in that year. You're going to have to treat it kind of like a deployment or something where it's like, okay, I'm going to knock this out of the park because maybe, you know, I've jumped around. Maybe I was, you know, enrolled in school and then I, you know, didn't complete it. And then, but now I'm showing, okay, going forward, this is who I am going to be academically. I think it just emphasizes even more the importance of really like knocking the ball out of the park when it comes to your coursework. Because again, you have so, so many like interesting things to talk about in your essays and your interviews. Really, the only thing that's going to prevent you from being really successful in just the admissions process is your GPA and MCAT score and things like that. But, you know, if you are in, the last thing I'll say and then I'll let everyone else talk is if you're in, currently in the pre-med coursework and you're like, man, I hate organic chemistry or man, I can't stand this, you know, biochemistry. I would just say, this is very much is a, you know, filtering system for getting you into med school. A lot of that material is important in understanding how to think about things and how systems work and how things maybe relate to each other spatially. And, you know, kind of thinking about mechanistically how things work. I think that that is about as far as a lot of the pre-med coursework applies to medical school. Like, if you're having trouble understanding, you know, gravitational pull of a planet on another planet in physics, like you're never going to need to know that equation, but you are going to need to know how things, you know, how one thing can impact another thing and how things relate to each other in, in time and space. So don't be discouraged is I guess my point. And also don't think, oh, man, like this is hard and I don't think I can do, you know, four years of this in med school. It's going to be completely different and it's really just a hurdle you kind of have to get over to show that you have the kind of intangibles, right? This, the discipline, the study habits, the work ethic, those, that's what you're demonstrating. Don't be intimidated if you are overwhelmed with, you know, DNA and genetics. Some of that stuff is important and especially depending on what fields you go into. It can be important or not important, depending on what your interests are. I just hope that people don't get discouraged because I know a lot of just civilian undergrad students get very discouraged by, you know, organic chemistry or some Weeder class that is not going to be in any way representative of your time in medical school or your career as a physician.
Yeah, and I think I took night classes at a few different schools around the Fort Bragg area, like Campbell and Methodist, and I even had an online class. If you're looking for a biochem class that's online, really straightforward. You have like 90 to 180 days to complete it at your own pace. It's through UC Berkeley. And I did that on a deployment and that worked out really well. And with respect to the MCAT, I took the Kaplan course and that, I can't recommend that highly enough. They say, you know, take like eight practice tests or something like that and I did it and got higher on every single one. And again, it's really discouraging and it really sucks to have a Saturday where it's a five-hour test and another three hours to review it or something like that. But that's an important number to your application. And, but a lot of medical schools don't even have prerequisites for coursework. So I think like, you know, I played like 10 schools, I interviewed four of them. And I think like half of them didn't even have prerequisites. So anyway, but the difficult part about the prereqs was finding classes that had the lab component, which I imagine now in COVID times is a little bit easier to do online or potentially at your own pace. But that was the biggest challenge was sequencing those classes that had the in-person lab requirements. So that's, that's kind of my experience with it and I, I hope that, you know, I echo what was already said about, you know, you're not going to really think about organic chemistry again. And after those first two years, you're not really going to think about those basic sciences again. You're going to be kind of applying them at a, at a higher level. But again, it's just something to get through and that, that MCAT is potentially, you know, a pretty important number of just getting your screener by in your application process. So again, I took that Kaplan course and that really helped me out. And I think at the time I was like halfway through organic chemistry. It already had all my biology, but my physics and my chemistry was 10 years old at that point. And, and that Kaplan course was a good refresher for everything.
Thank you. And I, I do have another follow-on question for you guys that transitioned out of the Army or, or your respective services, just how was it? I think I'm trying to beat my ego at this point. It's like, if you're successful in what you're already doing, it's like, you now, you're going to have to give up your successful career if this is your dream of what you want to do. And I'm tired of juggling active duty and kind of like we already discussed, going to a night class or deployments and this, and it's making, you know, five prerequisites take seven years. So it's like, you know, just how were you guys able to battle that transition? And then if you took a post-bac or like, what is your, what will be your life now? Would you use scholarships? Are you going to use GI bills? Like, just kind of, how do you go through that transition?
Yeah, it's a really, really great question. I'll speak because I just went through it. So I got out, so I was, like I said, I was at the 160th SOAR. I was doing really, really well. I, you know, I was leading teams. I had multiple deployments under my belt at this point. I wrote medical protocols for our team, you know, for our unit and for other soft enterprises like, and I was getting offers from higher tiered organizations to go work there. And I had spoken at medical conferences, so I had made myself into like, I have to stay in soft medicine. Like, if I, if I leave soft medicine, then, then who am I? Because I let my identity drive so far into putting work into that, that community. But then I, I had a really good mentor and that mentor encouraged that everything I'm doing, just like Chris said earlier, just like Pete said earlier, and, and the other panelists about for our undergrad here is, I was paralleling the goal, right? I kept, I kept, I was going towards the goal, but I wasn't going towards the goal exactly. So I realized for myself that if I was going to go to medical school, like my ultimate goal was that all my time should be focused on that ultimate goal. And so I'm, I'm non-trad, so I did the Leadership for Emergency Action and Disaster Response at GW, the military affiliated program, not a single class there besides statistics. And the health, the research writing, the health sciences translated to Columbia for classes I don't have to take. So I thought I'd never use the degree, like I said, but I got out on April 4th. And on April 8th, I was the Clinical Operations Director of the Ryan F. Larkin Field Hospital at New York Presbyterian for Columbia. So I, I was able to take my military medical skills and leadership skills, run a field hospital. And then for the next two months, I worked as an airway team leader inside of a New York City hospital COVID patients. And then for the last five months, I've been a COVID compliance officer for Apple TV Plus. So there are opportunities out there that I never thought existed. It's non-medical, but it was something cool. I was able to, the traits of being a leader and running teams, they all translated over to doing this COVID compliance job. And because just like you asked, post-bac programs, I had a great friend, his name's Chris, he's on this call. Chris Belair really is such a great.
I know Chris. Thanks, Chris.
He's such a great advocate for all of us when it comes to Sinai, when it comes to Columbia. And then myself at SOMC, I've been investigating all these academic institutions that, that help with this. So I looked at personally, just for you, I looked at Penn, Hopkins, Columbia, GW's post-bac, Georgetown's post-bac. So I looked at all of them and I talked to all of them. And none of them, besides Columbia, understood veterans. None of them, besides Columbia, had a veterans department that was active. UPenn, for example, I talked to their Director of Veterans Affairs. And then when I talked to admissions departments, they're like, yeah, we're still working on getting a veterans affairs department. So even in the own school system, they had no idea. So I decided that it was time for me to go full-time. I need to do prereqs. That's what's going to make me a doctor. All the extracurriculars I already have, just like Chris said, just like Pete said, those boxes are checked. And so now I'm in that zone myself where my contract for my current job ends in five days and I'm going full pre-calc Khan Academy study mode to get ready to go accelerate at Columbia. And I'll tell you, I'm using the GI bill. I'm waiting for my disability to come back to see if I'm going to be able to evoke rehab or not. This is for full transparency. For New York City, for the post-bac of Columbia, your GI bill, as long as you're a full-time student, will cover the cost of the program if you play your cards right. You could have maybe a couple grand here and there, but it's much better than 50 to 60 grand that you're looking at. And then because it's New York City, Manhattan, you're looking at $3,500 a month in BA, in MAH right now. And because of the COVID house market, you can actually get a really cheap apartment in the Upper West Side near the school and, and be doing really well, to be honest. And that's what I just did. So I know that's a very long-winded answer and I, I hope other people do speak up. But I, I just went through it and I, I, I was having anxiety attacks before getting out during COVID and I was calling Will Asenhart freaking out, like, I'm not going to have a paycheck. My job at the Secret Service disappeared because of COVID. I was, you know, had this whole teaching job. I was going to make great money and then it poofed three days before I was getting out. And then another opportunity popped up. So I say, if you want to be that doctor, if you feel that your job right now is distracting you from becoming the, a doctor, then you need to focus on becoming a doctor.
I really appreciate that. I truly appreciate that because that's, it's like, this is the furthest I've ever been. And it's like, I go to this job and this nominated job and this, and it's like, yeah, but I'm, I don't feel that sense of fulfillment in the path that I'm currently on because I know what I want to do. So I really appreciate that feedback and thank you. I really do.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, if I could, I'll, I'll add one thing. I know I'm not a panel member, but since you brought up the post-bac, I'll just kind of add in my two cents. I'm a little bit different from a lot of the folks here. I'm not in New York City. I didn't go to Sinai. Chris tried to get me to go there and for whatever reason, since I had already taken the MCAT, I may be ineligible, so. Missed that boat. But here's another perspective. I'll give on a post-bac. I mean, first of all, you want to say, you know, is a post-bac right for you or not? Because potentially, you know, you got to balance, you know, it's a great way to get all your prereqs and more in a very dedicated environment and it really allows you to focus on your success. But at the same time, it's another year away and it's eating into student loans, your GI bill, you know, what, what have you. So, you know, I think it's really important for anyone, you know, trying to go into med school, really do an honest self-assessment or reach out to somebody, you know, like through, at this organization, for example, and be really honest, like, what's your GPA and what does that mean? You know, if you've taken the MCAT, what's that score and what does that mean for applying? Your extracurricular experiences, what you want to do in medicine or PA or something like that. So, you know, depending on, you know, where you kind of fall on that line and what your goals are, kind of help you there. The other thing I'll say is I got out of the Marine Corps. I guess it'd be a little bit different situation than you because I could not get out of the Marine Corps fast enough. I was at the point where it's more politics than trigger pulling. And I know, Chris, you're, you're nodding your head, so you know what I'm talking about. So like, like it was just, like, like I was out in four months once I made the decision. Like, I couldn't get out fast enough. So like, there, there were no tears when I left. But I went to Meredith College in Raleigh, which if you guys don't know what Meredith College is, it is a women's college with a student population of about 2,200. So they have a post-bac program and it's co-ed because it falls in the graduate school. So I get out of the Marine Corps in four months. There's this guy going to a women's college. So I go from 12 years as a USMC infantry officer into a women's college and the average student is, I don't know, 13, 14 years younger than me. It was awesome. So it was awesome for two reasons. So one is you don't get to lose your military identity, right? Like, you walk into that situation, you two, you get, people really respect you. You know, it's a good, good way to interact with people. You learn a lot of skills in the military, just about like personal interactions and just sort of like social leadership that really helped me out. And you don't really lose, you know, you don't, you don't lose anything and you just got to make sure you're not the, like, this one time in the Marine Corps, like is the prelude to every story, but it's great. And you don't, you don't, you don't lose your sense of like being a veteran. Next thing I'll tell you, the, the real advantage you get from a post-bac is it's not just a chance to bump your grades up or get that extra prep for an MCAT. A post-bac program is a post-secondary institution giving you the thumbs up or giving you the stamp of approval that every other med school sees. So it is in, I would say it is a great way to bring yourself up above the pack because you're not necessarily just some super smart person applying for school. A good post-bac program will put through a letter package program. And when that goes off to schools, they, it is your stamp of approval. So even though I did not go to a post-bac program as prestigious as, you know, like Columbia or George Washington or something like that, you know, it's just a very small liberal arts college. The fact that they, it's just a, an accredited program by AMC, that meant, that paid off dividends. So because I was a rather young and foolish in college, I had a huge GPA deficit to come up from. So I applied to med school a lot. I had to apply three times before I first got in. I applied first year, first time, no interviews. Second time, no interviews. Finished a post-bac program. I got offered interviews at 13 of the 20 schools I applied to and I wound up getting in my top school. So again, you do have to balance, you know, the, the time and money for a post-bac. But since med school is incredibly competitive, especially these days, you want that leg up. I definitely would say look heavily into a post-bac. And even if you can't get into a post-bac at like a top level or Ivy League school, it's still going to pay you dividends.
I just wanted to add into that because not only the civilian post-bac program is amazing like that, there's also a military post-bac program for enlisted soldiers. It's called EMDP2. I think all branches are participating in, but I'm not sure how it changed ever since I got out. But yeah, I like that, that program also offered the linkage program to USAS. So you can continue your service as an office, medical officer through that program. So you don't have to have that break in your career if that's what you're concerned about. So yeah, you can look into that. And a lot of folks who went to Columbia also applied to USAS afterwards. So they could save on their GI bill when they get into USAS. So yeah, one of the Navy guy, he. Yeah, uh, one of the um Navy guy, he graduated from Columbia during the gap year. He went through this special master's program that's. Um, offered to um post back graduates. There's like different application process for the master's program at Columbia. So he did that during his gap year. And then he interviewed and got into USAS. And now he, I think he's on like a second or third year at USAS currently. Um, so there, there are multiple different routes that you can explore. Um, you don't have to like. You know, follow civilian route or follow Columbia post back and go into, you know, uh MD program. There's also DO programs that are amazing. Um, so um they have different standard, of course, but um it is also an option.
Yeah, I want to highlight a few things that Julia Hank and also Will said in the chat. So first, Columbia has more. Veterans than the rest of the Ivy League combined. They're extremely veteran friendly. Um, and that's for their School of General Studies as well as, and the post back falls under that. So if you're just a non-traditional applicant, you'll. Apply through the School of General Studies. I will say, and this goes to what Hank says. I think it's really important that you really put the time in upfront to reflect on what you want to get out of the post back because. I mean, it's going to take years of your life as a non-traditional student. You're already old. Uh, and you also have limited GI bill, limited, you know, uh, financial means to, to pursue these things. So. I think it's really important to think upfront that this is something that I want to do and this is something I'm willing to commit to. And it's not just a, a year. Back program, but it's in fact like I'm a, I'm committing to this post back program as well as, you know, medical school residency and a career in medicine. So I think that's really important. And uh, though. A- another thing that Hank mentioned, I think is really important just for anyone. This is not just for medical school or not for medical professions. But as a veteran, I think it's really important to adopt a lot of humility when you go back to school. Cause I think that, you know, whether you're, you know, get out as a junior officer or, you know, as an NCO. You've had a lot of responsibility and a lot of leadership and a lot of people look up to you and a lot of, you know. And you have a lot of, you know, authority. And I think it's important uh to humble yourself when you go back to school because you're going to be, you know, in classes with people a lot younger than you. Um, you know, and maybe they're a lot younger than you, but guess what? Maybe they took AP chemistry last spring. And so they can maybe really help you out with, you know, some, something you're really struggling with. So I think that's. That's important. And then the, the last thing I want to mention.
Over the weekend, but then no, I'm not going to be in.
Um, the last thing I want to mention is um. That, you know, you graduate bottom of your class at West Point. You're still going to be an officer in the army, right? You graduate bottom of your class in med school. You're still going to be called doctor at the end of the day. I will say, if you graduate bottom of your class in the post back program. You're not going to get into med school. So I think it's, it, you need to think of it as a means to an end. And the end is to get into med school. And so um, I think, you know, I, I remember being in the post back program at Columbia. I had a very clear plan. Of what I was going to do and what I was getting out of it. And I think that that really helped me. Because I think, oh, I saw a lot of people, even at a great institution like Columbia, who were, you know, not sure what they were doing. You know, they were spending a couple of years. Um, maybe more than that, they, you know, didn't do well in their first year of the post back programs. And now they're adding on an MPH as a third year to help round out their GPA. It can really turn into a. Whole second undergrad degree uh and can really take up, you know, your GI bill, but also more importantly, as an older student, it takes up time. And one thing about the medical school pathways is a long, long path. And so you have to be uh very. Um, intentional about how you're spending your time and what you're doing when you're in that post back program because it, it, at the end of the day is. You know, they're going to, you know, provide you a ton of resources, a ton of support, set you up for success uh in so many ways. But just be um realistic and kind of be brutally honestly with yourself that this is a means to an end and the end is to get into med school. So. Um, I think that. I just hope that if you are looking at a post back program, you really put in the time upfront to think, okay, this is. What's going to happen and, and this is how I'm going to, this is what to expect. And I think that, that always helped me if I just had a plan going in. So what I was going to expect and what I hope to get out of it and what I, you know, be realistic with myself uh before going in. Cause they will help you out, but at the end of the day, it's going to be on you to do well, you know, just like in any academic program. It's going to be on you to do well. Um. To, you know, be competitive for med school because uh they can be, you know, med school can be very unforgiving in admissions programs. So I would just. You know, even if you're at a top, top program like Columbia, if you have a bad GPA, um, it's not going to look good. Um, so I would just be really thoughtful before you get there because I think a lot of people kind of. Get off active duty and they're like, okay, now I, now's my time to relax and have fun. And, you know, I'm enrolling in classes, but you know, going out every night of the week or whatever it is. And uh you need to treat it with the same intensity that you, you know, treated meta, you know, military training, which is like, you need to be thoughtful and. And work hard and do well and to set yourself up for success down the road.
Pete, I, can I chime in or no?
Yeah.
Uh, so uh transition, we've talked about, we've had a couple of people talk about their experiences. I want to try to hit these efficiently. Uh, if you're looking at transition, depending on what stage of training, maybe you're in, maybe you're just thinking about going to med school. You know, and you still have five years left on your contract or whatever it is. Um, another thing that I, I don't know was talked about was. I know at least in the army, there's an ed center. So whether you're going PA, MD, there's an ed center there. And when I was going through. Uh, and I was in flight school and I knew, even while I was in flight school, I wanted to uh eventually become a doc. Um, and I was at the figure, I still had like six or seven years left. Um. There's an ed center there and I don't know if it's changed, but they will pay for you to go to school. Doesn't, i- it's not part of your GI bill. Um, and it won't bleed into any of that. And you can go there. The caveat, when I was going through, don't know if it's still a thing is. Usually it's a two-year ad so, but it serves concurrently with whatever contract you have.
That's correct. And it's current. That is correct. And that's current.
Perfect. So for the uh people on here that didn't know about that, essentially, if you have five years left and you do some coursework, it guarantees you up to like $2,000 or $3,000 or something like that. Which is some of what my classes cost. If you have five years on your contract, do that now, use it. I was afraid first. I thought they were going to tack it on the end, but I read through the, all the stuff there and I, I made sure I read the regulation. Don't let anybody tell you crap. Unless you read the regulation. Um, read the regulation. It doesn't add on, serves concurrently. So if you're thinking about doing the transition, you don't want to bleed in your GI bill stuff. Go to the ed center, read the regulation, but you should be fine. And that's a way to get it. Uh, second thing, I heard a lot of people talking about. Um, deja, if I'm pronouncing it correctly. Um, it takes a lot of time. I was an engineer. Um, I didn't have any prerequisites to. It took me a couple of years because they kept on op tempo, whatever you want to call it in your respective service. It took a long time to get the prereqs done. So I started early. I used the ed center. Um, it, taking a long time is normal. Don't get frustrated with that. Third thing, um. Keep at it, set small goals, you know, just say, hey, I just need to get X class done. Focus on that class. The common theme here is, hey, GPA, GPA, GPA. Yeah, your military background helps you a lot, you know, in different ways, but GPA. Focus on one thing at a time. Focus on what you can control. As far as money, um. Save money now. Yeah, granted, you have the GI bill. You have a bunch of things out there. Nothing's guaranteed. Things change. Save your money now. I started saving for the intent of med school while I was in flight school and that was six years out. I was put in a much better position. Didn't really have to use it that much, but if I do, I have a lot of flex room. Um, so it's normal to take a long time. Ed center, save your money now. Um. And if you do things one at a time, you know, it's just like those New Year's resolutions. People say, I'm going to lose 500 pounds and then I want to do X, Y, and Z. And then I want to run and, you know, an Iron Man and then I want to do, and then they fail. It's because they set so many expectations so high, so quick. It's a slow process. It's a transition. Takes a little bit of time. Um, so uh, the other thing is, uh, and I know there's a lot of panelists on here and other people from their own experience. Uh, that probably know more than me in this regard. If you're also thinking about, hey. I love where I'm at in the military and, you know, I, I don't want all that success to go away. And I want to build to the 20 years or whatever your story and tapestry that you want to weave. Um, you know, obviously you've got options to think about. Reserves. Yeah, you know, guard, sure. Uh, active duty, UH or whatever the, the thing is called. Each one has drawbacks to it. Uh, Coast Guard is another one that a lot of people may not think about. Once you go into the medicine realm, it's easy to hop around because everybody wants a PA. Everybody wants a doc. Everybody wants a medical professional. Also, another one is the public health service. They have a thing in the public health service where if you sign up with them to some degree, and I could be wrong. If you serve in a rural area in the public health service, like the Indian like Health Reserve, they will pay for everything retroactively. So if you're one of these people on here that's already used their GI bill. For their undergrad, um, that's another way to pay for it. Um, there's tons of opportunities. So don't. Don't freak when you see that, hey, med school costs X amount of dollars. You know, we're all here on, on here to let you know, there are plenty of options. And if you're like, I don't want to jump back into the military, Navy, Army, Air Force, whatever. But yeah, I want to continue service or some other capacity. There's other things you can do to kind of get you to where you need to be. Um, that was it. So uh, in, I put my email in there. If you guys want to talk about that stuff, I. I can talk about some of it. Um, and I'm sure there's other people on here that aren't even panelists or just candidates. That can probably speak about it better than I could. So.
Right. And I just want to add to, I'm sorry, Peter. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add, I did use, um, I did use the program that you were talking about in regards to tuition. I'm a med officer, so we get a lot of. We get, we're like the first ones to see those cool milk messages. So for anybody else who might be interested. I finished my ad so I'm what you call the free agent right now. So that's why I haven't been back to the educational center to use it. I did use it. It was successful. Um, so you would just simply go to the education center and it's actually under the PA program. You would tell them that you want to do the prerequisites for PA school. I, at the time focusing on USAS, um, I would have to send an email to the school, ask. I would ask them formally, please provide uh all your prerequisites for your school. And then the education center would look at my prerequisites to make sure I'm not, I'm not double dip, dipping or retaking a class. They matched the two and then they give me a degree plan. And yes, I was able to tackle three prerequisites under that program, but you're right. You do incur an ad so, um, and it runs concurrently. But again, like I said, I'm a free agent. So uh, yeah.
Thanks for that deja. I appreciate it.
Right. Real quick, there was a question in the chat about shadowing during COVID. And I, I mentioned this earlier, but you need to think about shadowing as something you do for yourself. It's not even really for your application. Like med school, everyone who applies to med school will have some shadowing. That's not going to be the thing that is going to like differentiate yourself or make you stand out. And. In fact, like a lot of physicians see, you know, shadowing students as kind of a burden and something that is important. For you so that you can see what it's like, but it's not important for something that is a. Like something that you've contributed to society, right? It's a selfish endeavor. Um, and I think that, you know, in COVID, it's very difficult to, you know, unless you're already a part of an institution. Uh, that's involved in medical training. It's very difficult to do a lot of these traditional things. Um, but I want to like point out guys like Ricky who have found ways to. Like make an impact and be involved in, you know, medical research and. Kind of show your academic bona fides and like have a personal narrative about your interest in, you know, soft medicine. Uh, you're able to be creative and show your level of interest and engagement in medicine and actually contribute to, you know, the. Research literature, whatever it is. There's, you know, it's not the traditional thing where it's like, okay, I, I signed up for this volunteering shadowing thing and. You know, I show up and I, you know, sit in an OR for a couple of hours and I have no idea what's going on. And then I go home. Like that, that is not really um a useful way to spend your time, in my opinion. Uh, and, you know, I think that it can be helpful for you to figure out what you want to do, but also realize like. Shadowing is something very unique to medicine. Like if you shadowed a tax attorney or shadowed a, you know. Um, contractor for, you know, construction, like it probably wouldn't be very exciting to watch people work. Like it's not, it's not inherently interesting to watch other people do their job. And I think that that can sometimes even turn people off medicine because they're like, this is really boring. I have no idea what's going on. But I guarantee you, if you are that tax attorney and you're, you know, doing some big deal or some, you know, corporate tax thing. Uh, or you're, you know, planning a big construction site, like I'm sure it's fascinating to be doing that. It's not very fun. It's not very interesting to be witnessing it secondhand. And I would make sure to have that same lens when you're, you know, shadowing in the OR or shadowing in the clinic. Like it's probably not going to be super interesting, especially if you have no idea what's going on in terms of the operation, the anatomy. The specific disease, whatever it is, uh, it's not going to be super interesting. It's also going to be exceptionally difficult in the current, you know, pandemic. And you're also not really contributing anything. Uh, and you're not really differentiating yourself in terms of, um, you know. What is unique about your story and your path to medicine. And I think that like, you know, just being creative, I mean, Ricky's got so many things. Uh, you know, so many irons in the fire that I think is really admirable and he's really leveraged his, you know, personal experiences, his expertise, his background. Uh, to contribute, you know, something unique and something that is, you know, he's able to speak about. And it's not like, hey, I just showed up and. Sat in an OR and I, I blacked out for four hours. I have no idea what happened. You know, I think that um, that is a very. Uh, it's a common thing. And I think people feel like it's, that's what they're supposed to do and that's why they do it. But I think it's a very weak um thing to do. Um, and I think it can be counterproductive because it can actually turn you off medicine, I think. Um. So I was just trying to be, you know, creative, think about ways to contribute. Uh, think about what your personal story is, what your personal path to medicine is. And then, you know, find that foothold and, and, you know, seize it, right? Like so. Um, you know, maybe part of your story is being a, a veteran and interested in being involved in veterans' health. And, you know, maybe you, you know. If you're looking for, you know, service projects and community service, whatever, like volunteer as a service to school mentor, like be a mentor. Uh, even if you're just like an undergrad student, you can help some enlisted, you know, service member apply to college because you're in it right now. Like. That, that's something you can do remotely. That's something that, you know, you're able to speak about. It's something that speaks not only. About, you know, helping others, but it speaks about your personal story, your personal narrative, what your background as a veteran is. And, and I think that that's a creative way to uh be involved and contribute without, uh, you know, in the current COVID environment, it's very difficult to do a lot of the kind of traditional. Um, wickets that people expect of you. But I think that this is actually an opportunity for you to be more creative and to, and to identify other opportunities. Uh. Outside of just like shadowing. Cause I think shadowing um doesn't really get you very far.
Thanks, everyone for, for joining us uh today. Um, and yeah, we'll stay here and answer more questions. Um. For those of you who are hopping off or just since I have the mic here right now. Um, for, we're thinking about doing these periodically. So if we do another one, well, one, has this been helpful? You can just write it in the chat. Um, if you think it's been beneficial or if you have an idea of what we should focus on next time um for another town hall. Um, like if there's anyone who's interested specifically in NGO work or an MPH, um. I've gotten some stuff in the chat from people here talking about um contacts that they know who are in a nursing school. Um, so maybe we can focus on that uh next time, but uh certainly open to your recommendations. So let us know. Um, yeah, so feel free, hop off. Um, but thanks so much for joining us and I'll stay here. Whoever else wants to stay or can stay here and we'll field more questions.